Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this glorious day, this beautiful community. We thank you for our many freedoms and blessings in this great country of ours. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in our discussions this evening. In your son's name, amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which is set by nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I am pleased to say that we have a quorum this evening. Thank you fellow commissioners. Announcements?
We received notice of a community meeting and the notice is at your places this evening. The community meeting is located in the Cortlandt Voting District. It's a rezoning application and the proposal is for a memory care assisted living facility along with some commercial pad sites. This is at the intersection of River Road and Bragg Road next to the Spring Arbor Development. The meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 20th at 7:00 PM at Salem Baptist Church located at 4044 Plank Road. The other announcement that I have is that we have no items scheduled for our next meeting. So at the end of this meeting, if the planning commission wishes, we can consider canceling that meeting.
Excellent. Yes. How's that? Next up is review and approval of the minutes of March 1st, 2017. I trust everybody's had a chance to review. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I move for approval.
Second.
I'll call the vote, please. The motion is passed, thank you very much. Moving on to, let's see, unfinished business, P-17-001.
Did I miss it?
That's you, Leon.
Yes. Saying unfinished business threw me off. Floor computer, please. The preliminary plat for Alexander's Crossing was submitted and it requires that the planning commission review and approve or disapprove of plat within 60 days of it being incomplete. The applicant is proposing to subdivide seven existing mixed-use lots totaling 138 acres into 380 lots, including 266 single-family residential lots with 114 townhomes. The lots would be served by public water and sewer and access via Mass upon the Church Road. The plat was before the technical review committee on March 9th and the applicant was provided comments and the applicant is not able to provide revisions to those comments in a timely manner and so the staff is recommending denial of the preliminary plat as it is presented as it does not meet the technical requirements. Comments were from planning staff, the Chesapeake Bay staff, GIS, traffic, zoning, and utilities. So with that, I would just request that the commission deny the preliminary plat which will restart the clock and the applicant will have an opportunity to address the comments and then re-sement the plat and then it meets the technical requirements, it will be brought back before the planning commission.
Leon, if I could ask a question. When was this particular thing brought to us the first time?
This is the first time it's brought to you. I made a mention, I guess, two meetings ago that it was going to be before the technical review.
But this is for the plat?
Yes.
Okay, well, when was this development approved?
This was approved last year.
Okay.
The rezoning was approved last year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll take a motion.
Second.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, if I keep this in order. We have a zoning update, is that correct?
The public hearing?
Excuse me, yes, the public hearing, my mistake. CA-17-003.
May I have the floor computer, please? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. The item before you this evening for public hearing is a code amendment to the zoning ordinance and it has to do with the alteration or enlargement of a non-conforming structure. The proposed amendment is related to the reconstruction of an existing electrical transmission line within an existing easement and there is a particular case before us that brought about this code amendment. So as you can see here, it really lines up with the project I'm going to talk about next, but what's really before us now is a code amendment that is more far-reaching than this specific project. This is an amendment that would apply to all existing electrical transmission lines within existing easements. So what the amendment does is it says that reconstruction may occur if it's done in substantial conformance with the existing transmission line structures and apoturances. The average height of the new structures in the county may vary from the height of the old structures by plus or minus 15%. So that's really to keep it in substantial conformance with the height. And the location of the new structures may vary from the existing structures by up to 60 feet from those existing structures. So those are the two main defining characteristics related to substantial conformance. The project that is specifically precipitating this code amendment to be considered is the Four Rivers Fredericksburg Transmission Line rebuild. This is a Dominion-Virginia power project. They must rebuild this line by 2018 to comply with reliability criteria. The line is within a 200-foot existing easement. It runs from Hanover County to the city of Fredericksburg approximately 34 miles and there are about 8.2 miles in Spotsylvania County and that cross is about 213 parcels. Hanover County and Caroline County have approved this administratively. We were originally looking at going through the special use process for this project, but then started to look at how other localities have handled this type of project and decided to consider a code amendment to allow it because this is a required rebuild within an existing easement and the easement is specifically for the purpose of electrical transmission lines. The city of Fredericksburg is also considering amendment at this point in time. They're currently in the public hearing processes as well. So the current project, on the left, it shows the existing design and on the right you'll see the proposed design. This is 115 KV circuit and on the left, the main difference that you'll see between the two is that on the left, it's indicated that it is a wooden H-frame structure. That's the shorter of the two, is a wooden structure and they're proposing to convert it to a steel structure. The approximate average height of the existing structures are 62 feet and the approximate average height of the proposed structures are 66 feet. The proposed width at the cross arm is slightly narrower, 37 feet versus 38. And the other types or the other specifications within here are the same except for the conductor type, which I would have to defer to the Dominion representatives to explain the difference on that. So you can see here that within Spotsylvania County, the proposal to change this will generally be that there will be a switch out from a wooden to a metal structure and it might be slightly higher. And that really depends on the topography. And here is an image of the line as it passes through Spotsylvania County. You can see here are the steel structures that exist and here are the older wooden ones that they are replacing to complement the steel structures. So we do have representatives from Dominion here this evening to answer specific questions that the planning commission may have. And staff does recommend approval of the code amendment.
Any questions or comments from one at this point? All right, I'll open up the, or I'll hear from the applicant if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure, they're not exactly the applicant, but they're certainly willing to answer any questions. And if they wish to make a statement to explain anything that I maybe missed, that would probably be fine as well.
Very well. So okay, on the public hearing, I presume we, there's nobody here to speak. At this point, I'll open and close the public hearing and we can move right to questions or comments any commission members have at this point. To me, it's a fairly straightforward application here. And if there are none, I'll take a motion on this.
May I say something?
Absolutely, yeah.
I certainly agree, but however, it's one thing I did not see. On mine road, where you have the lines and the whatever, it's beautiful. You put up new trees, you put up, I believe, dogwood or either crepe myrtle and it looks lovely. And I want to thank you for that. Beautiful. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments? So you need a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
Let's call the vote, please. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item.
Floor computer, please. Thank you. Good evening, members of planning commission. This evening I have two public hearing initiation requests. I'm going to give a general overview of the proposals and some next steps at the end of the presentation as we seek initiation to start the public hearing process on these. The first set of amendments that we have this evening, and I guess taking a step back for both of these this evening, as you know, we've been undergoing a ongoing effort to update the zoning ordinance. We've been through tremendous amount of the zoning ordinance at this point. Just recently took the historic overlay district to the board of supervisors successfully. So this has been an ongoing effort. Tonight's first request is regards to the off-street parking, loading, and stacking language in the county zoning ordinance. So again, the proposed amendments are in the zoning ordinance, specific to off-street parking, loading, and stacking. And as a general overview of the common amendments that you see throughout all three of these this evening, first of all, as we've been doing with all these updates, we've been trying to clarify vague references. Some of those that we've caught as planning staff and others through legal review, trying to make sure the language is clear and understandable as developers and citizens look to review our zoning ordinance as well as our zoning enforcement staff. Makes it an awful lot easier for them as well when you have clear language. There are a number of undefined abbreviations that we've found, general references to standards without specific direct locations of where those standards are located. So those are the type of things that we've tried to amend within this process. This is a zoning section that is enforced by the zoning administration, zoning administrator and zoning enforcement staff. Throughout this sections, we've had references to the planning director. That was kind of, that has been redirected to the zoning administrator where it should be located. It is not a function of planning director in this situation. Capitalization throughout the document when regarding to county permits, forms, position titles, and consistency with comprehensive zoning ordinance efforts that we were doing elsewhere, just to make sure that the format of the zoning ordinance is clear throughout. We've also updated the code reflect, related amendments approved elsewhere. And the example I will use for that is simply that since 1995, when many of these were last updated, we've had newer uses that have been added to the code. There have been changes to state code references. There have been amendments elsewhere in the design standards manual, in the specific zoning districts. And it was felt that reviewing this document, for instance, some of the parking standards last updated in 1995, it was time for an update, now being here in 2017. So we've recognized recent updates such as outdoor lighting ordinance as well. That was recently approved, making related items scattered throughout the code unnecessary and confusing. And we've sought to centralize those standards where they should be located with the zoning Specific amendments to off-street parking, Division 9, include changes to the applicability section to update zoning references acknowledging the mixed-use modifications. Mixed-use ordinance was adopted, I believe, in 2013. And again, this section, I believe, was last updated in the 1990s, so it was time to reference the mixed-use ordinance as being part of this off-street parking standards. General provisions section, we've removed stacking space dimension and parking lot lighting requirements. We deem them misplaced and unnecessary. And the reason for this is parking is off-street, the outdoor lighting is addressed elsewhere in the code and we've recently updated that. And language regarding stacking in the off-street parking section really should be addressed in the next division that I'm going to be addressing, which would be, or the, in the third one I'm going to address this evening, is in the stacking section. So there's a lot of overlap here within the off-street parking section. We felt it was best addressed elsewhere where it is specifically mentioned and addressed. We've expanded parking lot lighting hours by an hour prior to business open and after close. We felt that was a good move for employee access deliveries prior to business hours and after business hours. I know from years of working at a garden center myself, we used to get after-hours business deliveries by semi-trucks that would come in. It's good to have some lighting in the parking lot at those hours. So this proposing does expand those hours. We've expanded shared parking provisions to allow for reduced onsite parking to apply to all parking users. The way the language is currently written, it's specific to places of worship where a place of worship with an agreement for a nearby, or a nearby landowner can share their parking. That is not currently addressed for any other users. So what we've done is expanded that place of worship provision to all potential users where if you have two parking lot users adjacent to one another, they enter into an agreement that could potentially reduce their burden of providing parking by sharing their parking.
Is there, do you have any data on how that may work? Because I understand the shared parking between a place of worship and a, because of the hours of operation, but if you have similar hours, any data on how that would work?
Absolutely. And for that, I was going to address it at the end. What I plan on doing, because much of this, like I said, is actually a function of zoning administrator and zoning enforcement. When we bring this ultimately back for public hearing, I do intend on bringing the zoning staff to the meeting as well to explain some of these details on how they enforce and interpret these specific issues. Unfortunately, at this time, I don't know how they handle the shared parking, especially when we're talking about uses that historically have not had shared parking. I will certainly get back to you with that. I will get an update to them prior to them even being here. I'll incorporate that into the staff report.
Yeah, I do have a concern, I would state I have a concern because some of my experience with that has been that the parking becomes, the available parking becomes a premium and I do have a concern with it, but.
Understood.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Lastly, within this, we've removed complicated and confusing parking area requirements for residential subdivisions that were deemed problematic by the zoning office. There were even questions whether they were enforceable when I've talked with them. So we've proposed to remove that language. And again, this is one, even in my interpretation, I know when I was going through it, I asked the zoning office specifically, can you please interpret this? Because my read is one way and zoning is interpreting it a different way and it gets to a point where it's a throw your hands up type of language and it becomes really problematic. So that's why we've proposed to remove that language.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain that a little bit? What exactly did you take out?
Absolutely. Let me just bring the code here. So what we have is in Section 23-592, under general provisions, what's currently R, there's language regarding lots of 20,000 square feet or less in residential subdivisions with four or more lots. There's a, it's difficult. It has to do with the proportion of the lot devoted to parking area in the front yard. The language, the way it's been interpreted and has been just deemed problematic by the zoning office. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of familiarity with it, having not really dealt with it myself. If you go through it, it's, really don't have a really good summary for you at the moment, to be honest with you. But it has to do with front yard parking and zoning office has deemed it as problematic to enforce.
So front yard parking would be on-street parking, is that what you mean?
This has to do with areas dedicated for parking specifically. Let me, the language goes into, "The parking area shall be an area with a surface of gravel, asphalt, or concrete not exceeding an aggregate area of 200 square feet per passenger vehicle parked, up to a maximum allowed parking area 15% of the total square footage of the lot or 2,500 square feet per lot, whichever is less." So basically, what it does is it dictates how large the parking area can be on a property.
Got it.
Can I ask Mr. Smith why he asked that question?
Well.
He had a reason, I know.
Well, I mean, if you go through most of these subdivisions, you got cars that aren't parked in the driveway that are parked out in front. And there always seems to be a problem with the neighbors calling about, complaining about those vehicles parked there. And I was just curious if this was in any way addressing that issue or taking away from that. And then I am kind of curious too, because, I mean, obviously, VDOT owns a certain amount of that road space out in front of those houses.
And therein lies, I believe, from the zoning enforcement, now that you've brought that up, I appreciate that, therein lies, I think, the problem is that in many ways, this limits the amount of parking that you're going to have on the lot. So if you do have extra vehicles, essentially forces them onto the street overflow. So I think that's the big push for this, is to try to give a little bit more opportunity to park on the lot as opposed to the street.
Jacob, if this ain't, we move forward with this, one thing I think would be, since you're going to have zoning administration here, I'd like some real examples.
Absolutely.
Because if you pulling this, I want some examples in various places in the county that where this becomes an issue here so that we fully understand what's happening here. Because what we're proposing here is the removal of it all, right?
Yes.
But, so I, and then at the same point, I want to make sure that whatever we're taking out here, we're not going to make it worse. And at the same time, you know, property owners, give them an opportunity too. But as Mr. Smith said, yeah, I'm aware of a lot of, it's a double-edged sword here. So we just want to be careful that we're not yanking everything out.
Absolutely. I hate to see us yank something out and then force all these vehicles out on the street is a bigger issue.
Right. Yeah, ultimately, like I said, I think ultimately what will happen is, the goal would be to essentially provide the opportunity to park more on the lot as opposed to limiting it as it currently is. Like I said, there's a square footage per passenger vehicle requirement here. Yeah, that's where we're at right now. But what I'll do is, let me speak with the zoning staff on this and see if we can get a specific section of a presentation that can really give you good, real-world examples that they face on that.
Who, Jacob, is this a kind of, the initiation of this, is this from planning and zoning votes?
Yes, this amendment was, well, actually, when we went through this, what we had was we pulled together a group of planning staff, zoning staff, economic development was in the mix as well. If we needed environmental feedback, we brought in Richard from environmental as well. So this is a group effort, for sure.
Okay, well, I think it'd really be helpful to the commission if we had some actual, because if they go out on a complaint, they usually have photos and where it is and this and that, so we can understand exactly what we're dealing with here.
Absolutely.
Pretty comprehensive analysis of what's been happening.
Absolutely, happy to do it. Just moving on the off-street parking section, as similar to what we've done with the various uses, we've looked alphabetized, delisted the uses specific to off-street parking. We've added minimum parking standards for a number of unique existing or newly added uses where no standard presently exists. Again, this comes back down to the uses that were added since 1995 in many instances. We've amended minimum parking requirements as proposed. The proposal has sought to reduce, alter, or increase in a number of instances the minimum parking requirements. Generally speaking, we've left them untouched. There are a number of uses such as shopping centers and retail sales establishments where we look to actually reduce the minimum parking requirements. So you don't have excess parking fields. That's not to say an applicant couldn't come in and propose more parking than what is required at a minimum. The nice thing about it though is it reduces the applicant's cost if they do want to reduce their parking upfront and they don't, for their own reasons, they don't need the parking. We have a number of instances, you'll probably see throughout the county, where you have massive parking fields that at some times never get fully occupied. Or if they do get occupied, it may be once or twice a year. So this opportunity for some of the more major parking generators like a large shopping center does bump down some of those numbers, so the minimums are reduced, there's less impervious surface, there's less initial cost to development, and there's more room for building area for a structure or transitional screening or landscaping or other features onsite. We've revised, relocated, and removed parking space table notes as proposed. Number of the parking table notes we found were actually just as good as the parking standards and they were best located within the table where the parking standards were located. For instance, garden centers had a special note that was the same as the parking standards for all the other uses, so we moved them, we promoted that. The parking geometric standards, we proposed relocate those standards from the design standards manual, Article 5. This is part of an update to the design standards manual for transportation. In speaking with transportation staff, they felt that leaving the parking geometric standards in the DSM at this time was not well-advised and proposed that it would be best located in the county's code so there's consistency for our parking standards. And those geometrics are not limited to just 90-degree parking. You could have angled parking, you can have different degrees of parking, but the standards would all be consistent throughout the county code then if they're located there. For off-street loading, applicability, again, we've clarified and updated the zoning references, acknowledging mixed-use modifications. In general provisions, we've removed lighting requirements as identified as misplaced and unnecessary. Like I said, lighting requirements are dressed in the outdoor lighting ordinance, so we felt that that was best addressed in that section. We've added a life, health, and safety amendment to avoid conflicts between loading spaces and traffic circulation. This is an issue where you may have a loading space and parking, you have your main entrance of a building over here, you have your loading space in between and your parking area on the other side, and you have crisscross pedestrian traffic where there's vehicular motion or loading going on. And this is the same thing for stacking in like fast-food restaurants where you have lines of vehicles ordering and picking up food. The amendment would simply seek to avoid the primary access to the building separated from the parking area by one of those, one of those traffic movers in between. That's simply what we're going after in that situation. Lastly, in off-street loading, we've added industrial flex to the industry type 1, 2, and 3 requirements in public schools with private schools to have a common off-street loading standard. Right now, there's only a private school off-street loading standard and we've addressed public schools as well. They were missed in previous versions.
Jacob, on the stacking, when I immediately think of that, I think of it of exiting a site. Does this analysis include entering a site as well from a, from a street? site. Does this analysis include entering a site as well, from a street?
The stacking, right now, what we have, when I'm referring to stacking, it tends to deal with fuel pumps and stacking behind the fuel pumps. Say that you have cars in a queue, or at a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through facility, stacking along between the order station and where you pick up. That's the stacking standards that I'm addressing right now. I would say elsewhere in the code, for instance, in the Highway Corroble district, not right now, there are language to avoid conflicts between onsite circulation and stacking in regards to the entry points. Because if you have stacking across an entryway off a road, now you're backing the traffic up onto the road.
And we have, we do have situations like that.
Yes.
Harrison Crossing is a good example of that. Those fast-food, you know, people stack up on the main road, and it creates a problem, and it's a safety issue. So I would be looking for some analysis on that to make sure that we address entering a site as well as the internal stacking that you referenced.
Leon, I'd hate to put you on the spot, but do you recall the specific location in the county code where we addressed that? Yeah, it's a design standards manual, but what we'll do is, we'll get you that specific.
Yeah, I'll look myself, but every time I come across that situation, I, you know, wondering about our standards in that regard.
I do have a question. Like on the shopping centers, when we approve those, I know pretty much all the shopping centers in the front are no parking, far lane, all the way down the whole front of them. Is that design, is that state code, or is that a county ordinance that we do that? Now, the reason I'm asking is this, I know a lot of times, especially in the shopping centers where you have like these major grocery stores, food stores, you get a lot of elderly people that go in and get the groceries and come out, and then pull up in front of the grocery store to load their groceries up, which technically they're parking in a far lane, and they have been issued citations. Is there any, I guess my question is, can we designate spots in front of those stores for that? Or is that a state law that all that has to be designated for a far lane?
Mr. Chairman, I want to follow up on that. Give you a good example is Morton's. A lot of people will go get a lawnmower repaired, and I remember we had an issue there where we wanted to make a loading-unloading. That's the only place you can do it. And one of the questions, I know some of this is probably done in the fire comment, but you're exactly right. Can there be, I don't, I'm a little complex about why everything has to be that way. There's a certain amount of, you know, temporary loading-unloading in front of certain areas that should be allowed.
Yeah, I'm not certain if that's a state code, that whole entire front has to be that way, or.
I think there should be.
Minimum, but it looks like we could do something for the elderly people that do go there.
I agree. Thank you. Let me, if I may, that's very true. And it looks like to me that there could be loading, and it could be a sign there that says, "For loading," you know, 65 and over. But anyway, I really, that's, it's a good point, a good point.
I know the wise down here has a similar situation, where I think the whole entire frontage is a, you can't even load there, if I'm not mistaken.
I can tell you.
Most of them, you can't.
My consulting experience, that's the first comment from the fire department, is you can't park in front of the door.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I know what the fire department wants, but is that a law?
One of the answers we need to know is what you're getting at. I don't know if it's necessarily a state code requirement. I think it's a, we'd rather have all that open, so if there is an issue that's there. But there's some common sense with it, too.
And I don't say that all of it should be, you know, that way, but I really think that it should be taken in consideration, especially for the elderly that are disabled, that need to load their car.
Typically, you're absolutely right. In our experience, I was just speaking with Leon on this issue as well, typically, the fire marshal, fire department is the agency that's involved with making the comment regarding the far lane in our technical review process. So I will double-check with them about the source of that request, whether it is in state code or not, and I will get back to you on that as well.
I believe it is a fire code issue, but it may be mistaken, and please do follow up. And then, as we sit here talking about, there's something about the Home Depot over at Harrison that has a loading, well, the loading right off their doors that would be a good, you know, use of that.
The last slide that I have, in terms of substance of the proposed amendments, have to deal with the off-street stacking. Again, we've removed lighting requirements that have been, they're addressed elsewhere. Stacking as well as loading, again, to avoid conflicts with traffic circulation, pedestrian traffic specifically in that instance. We've removed minimum required spaces, amending the car wash stacking requirement to apply to principal car wash facilities. Altogether, I believe, right now, the stacking requirement is specific to automated car wash facilities. We've just, we've just extended to car wash facilities in general. We've added stacking requirements for fuel pumps in private-public schools. Fuel pumps, interestingly enough, I would think are one of the more common issues, instances where you would have stacking. And we've added a fuel pump standard in this. And we've relocated all other uses standards to the table. The all other uses were kind of buried at the, below the table, and it was just best to locate it all standardly within the tables itself. With that, as I had stated, I intend on reaching out to the zoning office, and I'll also speak with Fram about some of the questions that were raised this evening. What we wanted to do was get the ball rolling here, at least so we knew we had an ordinance to start moving forward in the public hearing process. But what we propose as next step is actually to post this out for public consumption for the next month or so, to gain insight from citizens, development community, private businesses, to see how they're interpreting these proposed changes. We'll collect that information and see if there's any additional suggested amendments prior to bringing this for public hearing. Again, once we get to the public hearing, we do intend on having zoning office present. And if they get really into the weeds, we may invite the Fram office as well regarding the stacking questions. So with that, staff does recommend the planning commission initiates these ordinance for public hearing consideration this evening. Thank you.
Jacob, one question for you. The parking standards and things that we've talked about, they're in compliance with the ADA requirements. I mean, we're not doing anything that's out of compliance with that.
No.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that.
I have one question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
You've brought, I mean, Jacob brought to us about the shared parking from, with churches and a business. I know that that can be a problem, but at the same time, I know that if a business, and I'll give you an example, okay? I'll have to call a name. But Spotswood is sharing with Covenant Funeral Home.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a necessity. And so that would be, take a note, would it?
No, absolutely not. As a matter of fact, what we're doing is, we're expanding it. We're saying it's not specific to a place of worship anymore, it's specific to the whole gamut of uses.
Okay.
Yep.
Bye.
Any other questions or comments? Can I take a motion?
So move, just one comment with the motion, too. I think, I want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but this thing on the far lane thing, Jacob, you've checked in with them. I think the way the county code's written is that the fire marshal or his designee, when they do plan reviews, they just make that decision. I think it's a county, because I've noticed, I was doing a little research here, and I noticed that every locality kind of has that. So I think it's probably, and we can follow up on, but I think maybe somewhere the state gives the locality some flexibility on that. So that maybe something, when you get everybody back together, is pull them in, have a conversation. We're not talking about anything that would hamper public safety at all. But there, I know Morton's was an issue, and I remember talking to the chief back then to say, can we do something there? Because it just made no sense. You couldn't even buy a new lawnmower, you can't pull up and get it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But I do make the motion, we move forward.
Mr. Chairman, this being a code amendment, we do need the motion to be in the form of the language in the recommendation of the executive summary that begins based upon the public necessity.
Do we want to read the motion in?
I'll be glad to read the motion.
Thank you.
Once I get back to. Give me the motion, I'll read it. I was over there.
It's on the floor computer as well.
Let's see. "Based upon the public necessity convenience, the general welfare, good zoning practices, and compliance with the Virginia Code, I move that planning commission initiate changes to the Spotsylvania County ordinance found in Chapter 23, amending and adding provisions related to Article 5, Division 9, off-street parking; Division 10, off-street loading; Division 11, off-street stacking."
Well done. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
I will call the vote. That's unanimous. Thank you. And when you come back, we probably will get into the weeds a little bit, Jacob, so.
Oh, absolutely. And again, I intend, before bringing this to just public hearing and all these questions being on the spot and you haven't considered, I intend on these questions being addressed in staff report leading up to the meeting. So you've seen it and had a chance to review it as well.
Perfect. Thank you. So next up, see, that was 23-171? So we've got 23-170?
Floor computer, please. Thank you. The second set of amendments this evening for public hearing initiation request are appropriate for 23-170 enforcement. This is also in the zoning ordinance, Article 9 specifically. It's a fairly short section of ordinance, so the summary I have, this is fairly brief. Substantially, we've done, we propose no deviations from the current zoning enforcement practices as part of the amendment proposal. We've had, added legal clarifications to further enforce and accurately portray enforcement functions. We've capitalized for consistency with zoning ordinance update. And in the enforcement responsibility section, there's references to prohibition of building permits as being replaced by references to prohibition of the zoning permit issuance. This section and the zoning ordinance should be specific to the zoning permits, not the building office. Building office is looking at the uniformed statewide building code and have their own processes. The building department was adamant that this be changed, because frankly, this is not a section of the code that they're looking at. These, the language here should be specific to zoning permits, and we've made that change. Also, in relation to injunctive relief and other similar remedies, we have striked references to attempted violations, being abated by injunction or other legal proceeding, as actual violation of the zoning ordinance needs to occur to warrant enforcement action. The language basically says a violation or attempted violation in terms of inaction by zoning enforcement, and an attempted violation is not a violation. So with legal review, we've proposed to remove that language. And with that being said, again, similar thing to the last time, we plan on posting this for public review for roughly a month period prior to bringing this forward for public hearing. And staff does recommend an initiation of these amendments this evening as well. Thank you.
Any questions on this particular? Can I have somebody read in the motion?
I'll make the motion and read it again.
Yes, sir.
Okay. "Based upon the public necessity convenience, the general welfare, good zoning practices, and compliance with the Virginia Code, I move that planning commission initiate changes to the Spotsylvania County ordinance found in Chapter 23, amending and adding provisions related to Article 9, Enforcement Ordinance 23-170."
Beautiful. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
I'll call the vote, please. That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, is any new business?
I have a question, if you will, please.
You can, absolutely. Go ahead.
Wanda, two weeks ago, I believe it was, three, I can't remember. But anyway, during the Board of Supervisors meeting, it came up about the requirements of parking setbacks and whatever that was needed for the new auto dealerships. I don't use vehicles, I guess, all vehicles. Now, and I think they were going, you had to come up with a resolution or something?
Yes. I went to the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Sebula has some major concerns, safety concerns, about the used auto dealers, especially along the Route 1 corridor. I encountered a number of situations where he saw them unloading cars actually on Route 1 and driving them onto the site. So I went to the board with a proposal. It's not a drafted amendment yet to the zoning ordinance, but a proposal on how to address some of those issues. The issue in particular are these legally non-conforming lots, where it is a older business, or it might even be a house that was converted into, say, a small office, but it's Zone Commercial 3. And so these used auto dealers are able to get a zoning permit and moved onto the site and operate without any site improvements. So those in particular are the ones that we seem to be having more trouble with. And so I went to the board, and they did authorize, moving forward, to craft a zoning amendment that would set a minimum lot size for auto dealers in the commercial and industrial, commercial 3 and industrial zoning districts, so that if a auto dealer is above the minimum lot size, it's a byright use, but if they're below the minimum lot size, it's a special use. And so now I need to research and figure out exactly what that lot size would be.
Is this for new businesses that go?
Correct, ones that are moving in.
The others that are there already?
Their grandfather. Their grandfather. They can continue to operate as they are. So they're grandfathered, so it would be all, only applied to new businesses.
Okay.
So I don't have a lot of detail, because I have to research to figure out exactly what the parameters of that amendment is going to be. But once I do, because this has come up at the planning commission, I was going to bring it to the planning commission for review before I went back to the board to authorize it for public hearing, so that you all will have an opportunity to provide your input.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other new business we want to discuss? Any other public comment?
Without objection, I'll cancel the next meeting.
Objection. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the vote. Thank you. We'll see you in a few weeks.